Good evening, Board members and residents. I'd like to call to order our regular board meeting for Monday, September 25th, 2023. I'd ask that everyone present please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Witt, will you please take our roll call?
Yes, Mr. Batkins.
Here.
Mr. Brado?
Here.
Mr. Olgiati?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Tominallo is asked to be excused. Mr. Witt, here. Mr. Perkess?
Here. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, including the approval of the regular board meeting minutes of September 11th, 2023, approval of the bills in the amount of $471,818.20, and approval of the August 2023 revenue and expenditure report. Unless there are any changes, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So mote.
Uh, motion by Mr. Olgiati with support by Mr. Badkins? Discussion on the motion. Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, next on our agenda is the approval of the regular agenda. Board members, I am not aware of any revisions to the agenda, so if there are none, I'd ask that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Is there support?
Support the motion.
All right, we've got a motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Olgiati to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion, Board members? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Board. Uh, next on the agenda is announcements. The Macomb County Chamber is hosting the State of Harrison Township on Friday, October 13th at noon at Gowney Golf Club. Tickets, tickets can be purchased, purchased from the Macomb County Chamber at their website, macombcountychamber.com. Our Parks and Rec Committee is excited to announce that their annual Hala Palooza will be taking place on October 14th from noon to 2:00 PM, and that is at Tucker Park.
Yes.
We are still looking for people to host a trunk, as well as we're accepting free registrations for trunk or treaters. You can find all of the information on the township website and on our social media platforms. We are hosting an open house at the new Macomb County Sheriff's Office mini station Saturday, October 28th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. For information about that event, as well as all other township events, you can call the supervisor's office, (586) 466-1445. Visit our website at harrison township MI.gov, or follow us on Twitter and Facebook at Harrison T W P M I. Any other board announcements? Hearing none, I'd like to, uh, recognize and invite our county commissioner, Mrs. Barb Zinner, to the podium to give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Um, last week, Thursday, was our full board meeting, which is, for some people who may not know, we go through everything that we've, we've gone through, um, for the month, or previous week or two weeks. Um, there are two things I'd like to bring up. The one is, uh, the state granted Macomb County $25 million for the Health Department. I believe that's going to be put to use in the verculium building. Um, we haven't been given, um, a heads up on the plan for that. The deputy executives have made, um, comments about wanting to redo that building, and they've explained some things, but we haven't had an actual description of what they want to do. Um, that would be two major building projects at this time, so I'm not sure how that's gonna go. I, I don't know what to expect. We haven't talked about it at all. Um, also, uh, we voted on the 42 cent, um, what cell phone cost, uh, this, I can't remember if it's a year or two years ago that we had the, the previous one. It seems like it was just a year ago, and I'm thinking it's longer, but, um, they use that, um, to put, um, a lot of, a lot of, um, technology together, um, for all the, for the sheriff's department, the different connections, for the other departments. Um, some people may not be aware of this, but you know, with the increased amount of cell phones and technology that we all use, um, I had, when I went to a conference, um, they, they really needed an area this big for all the wires to go through, for all the things. It's just, everything's changed, everything's technical. So, um, like in the north of the county, they have drop calls all the time, although I have found out even in Harrison, and especially in the shores, they had drop calls a lot, and especially for 911, uh, can't have drop calls. So, I voted for it last time, and it had on there that it could go up to $5 per cellphone, but it really wasn't going to happen then. This time, it had on there, and I wish it would have been the 42 cents, it was 42 cents, set for 42 cents. I don't know that that's really gonna cover the cost of what they need, but that's what they asked for. But, um, it went to another vote, and now this opens up the door where the cell phones could go to $3 a cellphone. And I, I, as much as I appreciate the police and fire, and I do anything for them, I'm looking at the citizens and what's happening in our society right now, and I, I, I voted no on that. Also, the finance chair and the finance vice chair voted no on that. So that was, um, so we will see what, at this point, it's set to go through, and I don't know that they're gonna, gonna go to $3. It may not go to $3. It may stay at 42 cents, it's very possible, where it is now. Um, somebody told me that they really need 85 cents per phone, that this 42 cents is keeping it where it was, um, without increasing the cost. So hopefully it will not go up, but at this point, um, that, that has gone through at our, at our, at our commission, but I just wanted people to be aware of that. It's set for 42 cents at this time, and the voting situation with that is different than the last time. So watch your papers, listen to your news shows, and, um, see what you think for your homes and for yourselves. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, thank you. All right, next on our agenda, well, actually, before I move ahead on the agenda, um, kind of just maybe a bit of an explanation, I noticed, uh, several new faces in the crowd, and, um, I can guess why people might be here, but, uh, instead of guessing, and instead of, you know, having people unsure about the process or procedure, maybe give a little bit of a refresher, so, uh, it is board policy that, um, we do accept two forms of public comment during our meetings. We have a number of items, items A through G, our agenda items, um, and so anytime we take, uh, we make a motion, but before we vote on that motion, we open up the floor for public comment, and public comment can be about that subject. So let's say you're here to talk about BSNA training. You can't come up during, uh, the hearing for a public, uh, Special Assessment District to talk about BSNA training, but when we talk about BSNA training, you can talk about BSNA training during public comment. So, the next items on our agenda are items D1, D2, and D3, and those are the Special Assessment, uh, District for Cortez, Santos, and Carno Street. So, that's gonna require us to take, potentially make a motion, or doesn't have to make a motion, but if they do, once we make a motion, we have discussion, we open up the floor for public comment. If anyone wishes to comment on the motion, you can talk about that subject. If you're here to talk about anything that isn't on the agenda, item H is the last item on our agenda, and that's, uh, public and board comments. So if you just wanna come up and say you're happy with a park, or you're mad about something in your neighborhood, that's when we take public comment about anything else. So, um, we also have on-deck chairs, you notice two chairs that are over there underneath the decorative rug, so, uh, the idea is, is out of respect for your time, so that we're not here all night, and, uh, for our time as well. If, uh, one of you is talking about item D2, and another one of you also wants to talk about item D2, we encourage you to go up and sit in the on-deck chair, so that when the speaker is, when any resident who talks is done, the next person's ready, so that way, everybody has a chance to speak, and we're not standing around looking at each other, seeing who goes next. If you wanna talk, go on up, don't be shy, grab a seat, and, and, uh, and give us your public comments. We generally try to limit public comments to three minutes in length. If you've got a thought you wanna finish, we're not gonna tell you to be quiet and sit down, but a lot of times, when there is an issue, folks are for something, against something, they kind of all have the same comments, and it's certainly okay for you to go up and, and, uh, say your comments, but we try to limit them to three minutes in length. At the end of the meeting, the general public comments, that could be about any subject, uh, we allow, we try to ask you to stick to five minutes for those general comments. So hopefully that helps everybody understand how we do things, so that we give you a chance to have input, but we also, you know, make sure we keep the meeting moving out of respect for everyone's time. So if there are no other board announcements, we'll move on to item D1, the Special Assessment District. Mr. Witt?
Yes, thank you. Uh, at our August 28th meeting, uh, we adopted resolution number two, which set the date for the first public hearing for the Cortez, Santo, and Carno Street Special Assessment District. Uh, this public hearing is noted as a public hearing in necessity. Uh, the notice for the public hearing was published twice in the journal, and we also sent notice to each title property owner via first-class mail, uh, based on the way the name appears on the tax assessment records, uh, in advance of the hearing. Uh, the purpose of the hearing is to speak for or against, uh, for or against the project, to allow those individuals to have that opportunity. Um, and this is a, uh, just so the board members, this is a special assessment that was driven by resident petitions, that we had over 50% of the frontage represented, uh, in favor of the project, um, and we're moving forward with it through the, uh, Macomb County Subdivision Reconstruction Grant Program. So assuming it all moves forward, it will go through to the grant program, and that will be applied for, by the end of this week, we're working with our engineer firm on that.
Now, in the event that the grant isn't received, have, have these neighbors, has this neighborhood indicated whether they still wish to move forward, or?
They, they were moving forward with the project, grant lined up, so.
I see. So if we don't get the grant, they still wish to move forward?
Like it paved.
Okay, all right, good, all right. Um, well, with that, uh, I'll be looking for a motion to open, uh, the public hearing, number one.
Make that motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Badkins, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Brado? All right, so this is a motion on opening the public hearing, presumably once it passes, the public hearing will be open, so, uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, Mr. Witt, will you take that, because of roll call?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Batkins?
Yes.
Mr. Brado?
We're, once we do this, we'll open the floor, and then we'll accept public comment.
Uh, Mr. Olgiati?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Tominallo is excused. Mr. Witt, yes, Mr. Perkess?
Yes.
I can't hear you say yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanna make sure it's clear.
Mr. Brown?
So, at, at 7:13, we have, we are now open regarding public hearing, number one, regarding this special assessment, so at this time, anyone who's present who wishes to speak for or against the special assessment?
And it, just before we, uh, we did have one, uh, email sent to the township, um, from Mr. and Mrs. Jones at 39105 in opposition to the project, and that'll be recorded in the minutes.
And if you do wish to speak, uh, in opposition, uh, it's important that you identify your name and your address, which ultimately preserves that right, correct?
Yeah, you're ultimately preserving the right to appeal the assessment to the state tax tribunal, so we wanna make sure the record's correct, so that way, if there is any further action, you have that in the minutes to properly verify it.
So, anyone who wishes to speak for or against it, we welcome you to, uh, come up to the podium.
Am I correct in assuming this is a special assessment for the repaving of Cortez?
That's correct. And we encourage, to the extent that you can, make sure any conversation be done at the podium, that way, it's recorded, right? So sometimes if you're, you know, I can hear you, but if it isn't picked up on the microphone, and then, there are folks who may have various reasons they couldn't be here, so if we try to have conversation in front of the microphone, we know that anyone who might be watching at home, or streaming it later, if they had to work tonight, uh, they can know what the record was. And if there's someone else who wants to speak for or against it, we encourage you to use the, the on-air chat, on, on, on-deck chairs, sorry.
My name is Gilbert Richard, I live at 39157 Town Hall. That is the northwest corner of Town Hall and Cortez. My house fronts Town Hall, my address is on Town Hall, my garage faces Town Hall also. The repaving of Cortez does me very little good, but I'm still in the same lot, the subdivision. I'm in the El Dorado Noes subdivision. I don't believe that I should be included in the assessment. I vote in favor of my suggestion.
All right, thank you.
I, I live on the opposite corner.
And just for the record, if you, if you wanna maintain?
Rob Jones, uh, 39105 Town Hall. Um, I agree, the street needs to be repaved. I just don't wanna pay for it. And that's because, when you do Town Hall, I'm gonna pay for Town Hall, too. So nobody on Town Hall will be assessed when you redo it?
So it isn't a back and forth? We're gonna accept public comment, we won't, we don't typically engage in a conversation. So there's board comment, there's public comment, so during this time, you can ask questions, you can make statements, but we won't directly answer those questions during this forum.
Okay, but our statement is the same as his, that our house faces Town Hall, our garage and driveway are off of Town Hall, so we don't think that we should be included in Cortez, because we don't live on that street.
Uh, Jack Zahn, I live at 25488 Cortez. I guess, uh, I got a lot of things that, when we had the other meeting, there were some, um, the first meeting, in that meeting, uh, it was told, or asked about repaving Cortez. And also, I guess the culverts and stuff was also included with that, um, and said you needed a grant for that. Uh, I vaguely heard a little bit about a grant that you were talking about. I, I don't quite understand that, and it, you haven't really told us about that. What, what's the grant? What, are you, who does that? Who puts that grant in, uh, or the recommendation? I have no idea. I don't know if it is put in. I think we'd all like to know how much, how it affects us. Um, I think, uh, as you're representative for, for us, you owe us that opportunity, and you should tell us, um, so that we are not, uh, blindsided by, by some cost that, uh, by the way, I just wanna throw this in, 'cause it really bothers me, there's 14% of, 14 of the houses on Cortez and Cantos and Santos that are retirees. So that means that within the next 10 years, in my opinion, and I'm gonna be one of them, we will be moving, so we'll be responsible for that 10 or 12 or $14,000 that, that you younger people don't care about, 'cause you're still being there. But retirees do care about it, because we have to pay that money, and we're told by, I think Mr. Witt was at our meeting, uh, we were told that we have to pay that before we can sell the house. We cannot pass that on to, to anyone else. Um, so, and also, in conversations with the neighbors, and I think one's not here, um, now, that, uh, there was also, that was not ever discussed in the gentleman that went around and took the, the, uh, survey, or whatever you wanna call it. But, anyway, so, uh, but I'm, um, I'm, I don't care if we have the road or not, I just wanna know exactly, and there's a 20% overcost, we were told, uh, at that meeting, that potential, that it was not only gonna be, uh, $10,000, roughly $10,000 per home, but it own, two things, there's a 20% overcost, and if they did the, and I might be saying it wrong, the culverts, it would be additional 10 to 20, to $10,000 per, per house. Um, so I'm very, I'm, I'm not sure what's Macomb gonna do about that, and what, what, but I'd like, I'd like, and we, I think, we owe, we owe, uh, you owe us that explanation of who's doing it, and I know Macomb is gonna do it, Macomb County. That's pretty much I, what I have to say.
So, if it's agreeable to everyone, if there are questions, because I can tell by your comments that maybe, uh, it's not really clear what this process looks like, and it might influence what some of the future public comments are, instead of waiting till the end, unless it's a problem with this board, maybe I can give an explanation of what this process is, and, and try to help, so it might lead to some, instead of asking the same question. So, um, a couple of things. You, your neighborhood is, those, those streets in that neighborhood are deemed as, they're labeled as local roads. So the, in Michigan, various roads have various titles, and the funding is based on what that road is. So we recognize that, um, Cortez is not the same as I-94, right? That's, that would be the extreme. Cortez is a local road, I-94 is an interstate, but there's a number of roads that fall between there. So for example, Town Hall is not really a local road, because, um, I don't drive on Cortez, but I drive every day to and from work on Town Hall. So some roads are collector roads, thoroughfares, and some are local roads. In Michigan, Public Act 51 defines how monies collected for the purpose of maintaining roads are divided. So we all pay gas tax, we all pay registration fees, there's various sources of money that pay for roads in Michigan, and they're collected. Michigan, then, using Public Act 51, has a process and a complex formula of how they spread that money back out. If you live in a city, Public Act PA 51 money, Public Act 51 flows to a city. Cities have responsible, responsibility for the roads. If you live in a county, I'm sorry, if you live in a township, the county has responsibility for the roads. So cities typically have road departments, because they're responsible for the roads. Townships do not. So no money flows to Harrison Township to maintain roads. That's number one. So the road in front of your home is a county road, and it's the responsibility of the county. Public Act 51 also specifically states that a county road agency cannot spend any money to maintain a local road without matching funds. In other words, the county cannot, by law, come out and just fix your road. They can put down cold patch, they can plow it, they can do minor repairs, but they cannot reconstruct or rebuild the road without matching funds. Two sources for matching funds, you or the township. So, some townships have a road millage, where we assess everybody a small tax, we collect that money, and that gives us the funds available to, to provide matching funds to the county. This Board of Trustees, back in 2014, did propose a local road millage. Uh, it did fail. In the nine years since then, dozens, or more than a dozen, streets have been repaved using the Special Assessment District process. So our thought is, if it didn't pass in 2014, and literally hundreds of homes are now paying a special assessment, that's hundreds of people who are definitely not gonna vote for a road millage now, 'cause they're paying so much a month, or so much a year, for 10 years. So the only real process that we have to do local roads, to get them repaved, is the Special Assessment District process. So, you can repave your road, collect enough signatures, it's a majority of signatures, a majority of people, buy linear footage, we go through that process, the county ultimately does the work and manages it. Recognizing that there are problems with local roads, for the past several years, Macomb County has made available local, uh, Road Subdivision Reconstruction Program. The way that works is, they'll give you up to 50% of the cost, give you, they'll cover 50% of the cost to redo a road, however, it comes with a caveat, it has to be a certain length of a road, or more, you can't just do 200 feet in front of my house, they don't, they don't allow that. Uh, and then also, it has to include drainage improvements. So typically what we do, when we have residents who come to us on the street saying, "We wanna get our road redone," we go through this process of explaining what the process looks like, how, without, without your share of some of that cost, it won't get done. We then go to our engineering firm, and we get an engineer's estimate of what the, what the scope of work is. So we try to say, "Take a look at the road, do an evaluation, what do we think this cost is?" We talked about 20%. We then typically add up to a 20% contingency. So let's say the engineer said, "To do your roads, it's gonna cost $500,000." We're gonna come back and tell you it's gonna cost $600,000. That's our estimate. Why do we do that? Because whatever that estimate is, is what drives the number that's on the petition. If we circulate a petition, I'm sorry, if we prepare a petition, and you circulate that, because it's up to the neighbors to circulate the petition, and it says it's gonna cost you $7,000 apiece, we can't come back and say, "Actually, it costs $10,000." The law doesn't allow us to do that, and that makes sense, 'cause you really don't wanna be given one number, and then come back with a number that's ridiculously high. So if the actual cost of the project is more than 10% of whatever number was on that petition, project can't go forward. So it's for that reason that we try, when we do that engineer's estimate, to, to estimate the number to be artificially high, with the hopes that it'll actually come in lower or less. That way, if we tell you it's gonna be seven, you can't be upset if it comes back at 6,500, you signed it at seven, you're happy with 6,500. So that's where the 20% contingency comes in. The actual amount that anyone is assessed, when the project is done, isn't the estimate at the beginning, it's what the project actually costs. These projects are bid through the county, we don't, we're not involved in that process, but they're unit price bids, and that's important, because when the engineer goes forward with this project and designs the actual project, it says, "Here's how, here's what I want you to do." Right now, we just have an estimate, but if this project goes forward, the project is engineered, it's designed. When they're done with that design, they're actually going to create a list of unit prices. They're gonna say, "Well, we did the calculations, and based on the dimensions of the road, we have to grind 3,245 linear feet of road at this width. So give us a price per foot to grind up the road." The contractor bids that. If they grind more, or they grind less, they can't say, "Well, we're gonna charge you $5, but since you asked for another 50 feet of grinding, we wanna charge you $100 per foot." No, no, the unit price is locked in, so if the job is increased or decreased, the, the contractor that does the work can't raise the price. So, for example, one of the unit prices that's generally easy for us to understand, maybe your mailbox has to be removed based on some work that's done in front of your home. If they say it's $50 to remove and replace a mailbox, we assume there's 20 mailboxes. That's 20 mailboxes at $50 apiece, that's $1,000. If they only do 19, it's only $50 less, and if they do twice as many, they can't come back and charge us $100 per mailbox. So, the, the project being unit price assures- So the, the project being unit price assures us that they're not going to try to pull a, kind of a fast one and overcharge us if we make changes as the project goes on. But regardless of what the estimate says, the assessment is the final price, what, whatever it actually costs when we're done. So if in the field, if the people managing the project see a cost-saving measure, and the project is less, we, everybody in the street pays a little bit less. So the grant program, what we have historically seen, and we've done this again dozens of times, there's a number of streets you could drive to, I can tell you, you want to see what this looks like, go to this street, go to that street. For reference, what you guys are doing on your street, I'm doing right now on my own street. I've been in our home 33 years. We've been doing this more than half a dozen years, and I'm, I'm in the process of going door-to-door and asking my neighbors to sign a petition, so I'm doing it on my own street. So if there was a secret batch of money somewhere, I would definitely use it on my own street. And so I'm doing exactly what you guys are doing. What we found from prior projects on prior streets is that the cost to do the road is one cost, the cost to improve the drainage on the road typically doubles the cost. But the county pays for 50% of the project. So as a rule of thumb, if we say it's going to cost you $7,000 to repave your road, but if we get a grant, it's going to cost you $7,000, it sort of doesn't make sense. But the good news is, a lot more drainage work is going to occur, and it's that drainage work that gets the water off the road that makes that road last longer. So it's a good investment upfront because that asphalt is going to last longer if we can get the water off of the road and avoid that freeze thought cycle that causes that asphalt to deteriorate. So the reason why we say it really isn't going to change the cost is because it doubles the cost, the county pays half of it, so it tends to be awash, but you get a much better road. So, so the process is, we initially, when, when, when a number of residents come to us and say, we think we might want to do a, a special assessment in our neighborhood, we have our engineer create an engineer's estimate, we call a meeting, in that meeting we give you what we think the cost would be, and we try to answer some questions. If there's enough interest, some of the neighbors come forward, they ask for petitions, the clerk's office does a great job of preparing, preparing the petition so that, that it's a legally binding petition. If you just make one up on your own and you miss certain things, it might not carry any weight. So we give petitions, allow you to circulate them, we collect those petitions. If a majority of the people sign in favor of that process, we move forward. I don't want to go to your street and tell you, you should pave or re, or not repave your road. It's none of my business, it's your road. It would come from your pockets. But if a majority of your residents want to do it, we're kind of in a position where we don't really want to say, well, yeah, but Mr. Smith doesn't want it, so we're not going to do it. We're kind of looking to say, we're going to try to do what a majority of the people on that street want. If we get those petitions and we talk about the grant process, we also apply for the grant. So I think at our last meeting, we voted to spend up to $4,500, $1,500 for three streets or three neighborhoods who said they'd like to redo their roads. We're in the process of doing that now, and we're going to do the best we can to try to get a grant, which should result in either a lower cost or a better overall project or both. But it isn't a question, and, and with all due respect, sir, younger people don't care, I care about everybody in your neighborhood, and if a majority of them want it, and they sign a, I'm not signing the petition to repave your road, but if a majority of your neighbors do, that's what they thought the best thing was. I can say we've done this again, you know, over a dozen roads that we've redone through this process. It's been successful, it is additional work for us because we have to manage it, but we have seen that it results in improved property values, improved resale values, it doesn't result in an increase in your taxable value, you're on a paved road now, when you're done, you'll be on a paved road, it's just in better condition. So we're not going to increase the taxable value of your home, that, that's locked in. But it should result in improved sales of homes, and it's those comparable sales that generally drive the value of your home. And so what we've seen is usually the value of the homes on a street that repaved their road go up more than the cost of that road. You can pay upfront if you choose to, once the project's done, we have a final number, we, we send out an invoice, you can pay it if you choose not to, we go through a bonding process, we borrow the money at interest rates that are lower than you or I could get on our own, because people like to lend money to municipalities, we can tax to pay our bills, so we never really run out of money, we have a taxing authority. So we bond for it, we get a low interest rate, we spread that out over 10 years, and you can pay that cost, whatever that final cost is, over a period of 10 years. I don't know if I missed something, something that pops up?
I mean, there were some specific questions.
Oh, for sure, and I.
But we'll get to those, that was the general overview.
Right, but I know, the one gentleman, you had some questions, and I felt like, if I can explain that process, it might lead to another question, but at least we don't wait till the end to.
Yeah, I think that, I think that covered the general.
What the process looks like, so, yeah, so, and I, and I'm, I'm not opposed to you having the opportunity to go up to a podium and say what you have to say, or ask any other question. We don't ask, we ask that you, don't do it from the seat, because again, people can't hear you. And if somebody, you, one of your neighbors may not be able to be here, but they really care just as much as you do, and this way they can hear what you have to say.
I'm sure, I hope they do. But Matt, you, you just referred to two or three times now, the, we pay by linear, right? And we were told, at least I was, at the first meeting, it was by driveway.
Yep, so I, and, and I don't normally engage in back and forth, but out of respect for your question, the, the rules that we have to follow are rules decided by our state legislature. The state legislature said that when you do a special assessment district of this type, the vote, if you will, your signature is based on your linear footage. That's the law, that's not up to us. That's, that's what it is. But once you have an approved special assessment district, the way in which you divide the cost has to be fair and equitable. So I'll, I'll give you, say, an example of another, of, of, of one of the, what, what, where that becomes tricky. One of the, one of the neighborhoods that approached us this year was Conger Bay. You may be familiar, that's out toward the end of North River Road, it kind of, the road that comes, it's sort of in front of bumpers, and it goes out to two marinas at the end. What's fair and equitable? How do we determine how much each marina pays compared to each home? So we have to try to come up with some formula, some basis of dividing the cost. You don't have that problem in your neighborhood, you all have single-family homes. So when we look at your neighborhood, we tend to say, well, really none of you benefits significantly more, do I get a better benefit if I live on a corner lot as opposed to a, a lot in the middle? So it's our recommendation when we do these, that instead of pitting neighbor against neighbor, we just say, listen, you're all going to have a new road, so we suggest that you split that equally based on a driveway, or if you have a vacant planted lot, that, that's still, because it could be a home one day. So that's the reason why we do that. Law says for signatures, for the value of a signature, for the weight of a signature, has to be linear feet. Law says we have to come up with a method of dividing the cost that's fair and equitable, and generally, I mean, I could have a 100-foot lot, and I'm a single guy, and you could have an 80-foot lot and have five people living at your home, right? So we think that doing it by the driveway is the fairest way to do it.
Oh, so it is by the driveway?
The cost division is by the driveway, but the weight of the signature by law is by the linear feet. So if I have a 100-foot lot and you have an 80-foot lot, my signature counts a little bit more, and that's not up to us.
Just, just as an aside, I don't usually comment.
Yeah.
When this process was in 1973, this gentleman, they did it the other way by linear feet, and the guy that lived in this gentleman's house, which is huge linear feet, he was the biggest complainer.
Well, this was just where you grew up. This is your neighborhood.
But it's not being done that way now.
Oh, okay, well, when you talk linear feet, that, that, that's what I thought it was, was at the meeting, he said, per driveway. That's the only reason, I said, well, maybe I'm interested.
That's what, that's what we find, because it's, it really isn't, you know, a home is a home, you know? So we don't necessarily, so.
I don't drive by my lot, so.
Yeah, you could argue, hey, if I live at the end of the street and it's a dead-end street, I drive the whole street. You live at the beginning of the street, you only drive a little bit, but we've found that doing it by the driveway is fair. And again, I don't normally engage in the back and forth, because I don't want things to get out of hand, but trying to be respectful.
My name's Joe Pitnato, I live at 2 I-538 Cortez. My only concern was, person that went around with the petition, oh, one of our neighbors who was here, that special assessment would pass on to the next person if they sold their house. That should have been sent out in a letter stating that you're responsible for the whole thing through the 10 years if you're going to, unless you're going to pay for it upfront. I think that should have been checked out. Some people that may have signed the petition may not have known that. That's my concern. Thank you.
Again, Gilbert Richard, living on Town Hall. I feel I'm coming in at the end of this entire discussion because I never received a petition. Nobody came to me, my house is on Town Hall, and they're going to repave Cortez, so they probably figured, well, we're not going to even talk to him. I didn't get a chance to see a petition, I didn't hear about any voting going on. I got a letter a month, month and a half ago, and that was the first letter I received saying that you're going to go through and, and charge everybody $10,000. Well, I felt that I got let out of the whole deal by not getting a vote in the first place. I should have been getting a petition. I don't know how many votes you had asked, if we don't get the grant, do the citizens still want to go through with it? And it was a positive response. How many citizens voted to go through with it? Was it a majority? Did a majority of the citizens sign a petition? That's it, thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? Well, hearing none, and seeing no other public comment, I would entertain a motion to close public hearing number one, special assessment district for this road improvement project.
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there support?
Support.
A motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Brado, and for whatever it's worth, we also have items D-2 and D-3, and we anticipate making a motion, so there will be a couple other chances to, to make public comment if you choose. But it's been moved and supported to close public hearing number one, it looks like at 7:42. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Brado?
Yes.
Mr. Backens?
Yes.
Mr. Olgiati?
Yes.
Mr. Tom and I lose, excuse Mr. Witt, yes, Mr. Verkasten?
Yes. So I'll do my best to answer a couple of the other questions. So the very first comment was from, I believe, a gentleman and his wife, or one of the first comments regarding whether or not there would be an assessment for Town Hall. I've been on the board 15 years, and I, so I won't tell you that I remember exactly where it was, but it was more than 13 years ago because I was not supervisor, and we read, did repave Town Hall, I should say the county repaved Town Hall, and there was no special assessment done at that time. Town Hall is a different kind of road, I cannot promise anyone here what will happen with Town Hall. Why? Because I'm a township, and townships don't control our roads. So the county ultimately makes a decision on what happens to Town Hall. So we try to partner with the county and neighborhoods to try to fix these roads when there's support for doing that. But I can't sit here and say, I promise you'll never have an assessment for Town Hall, or I guarantee you will, because it's not my, not my authority, it's not my jurisdiction. I can say factually 100%, somewhere between 12 and 15 years ago, Town Hall was repaved. Also, both sections of Lance Cruz, and I think recently Ry Mould, and none of those involved a special assessment to any of the people who were on those roads. So whether that happens in the future, again, I can't promise that. So there was a comment or a question about whether or not an assessment does or doesn't pass to the new owner? You know, I kind of think that's a, one of those rose by any other names. Let's just say that before.
I mean, there is specific answer to the question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, it is one of those things where, you're right, there is a little bit of it, but the petition, it can pass from one to another, but normally in a closing, we, we've only seen one out of the hundreds of special assessment districts where they had inquired about passing it along. The majority of the time, it is handled at closing because nobody wants to take on somebody else's cost, because they're either, A, accepting less as the buyer, or you're paying less as the buyer because you're taking on a special assessment, or as the, as the person that's selling the house, you're going to, you know, absorb that cost upfront. So it's, it's left pocket, right pocket, really, is what we've seen.
Right, and that was, that was the point I was making. If your home was worth $280,000, but now the comparable sales are $300,000, you made 20 grand by getting your road repaved. If you got to pay off 10 at the closing, well, you split the difference, you made 10 grand more than you would have. I can't, again, I can't promise that that's what's going to happen in your street, but we have historically seen that the comparable values of homes increase as the road is repaved, and so you should net out, but how you resolve it is.
Traditionally, what we see is a negotiation and settlement between the two parties, and it's similar to if your roof is 15 years old and it's three years away from needing to be replaced, you say, hey, I got the inspection, I'm going to have to pay for that roof, I want concessions. That's what we see on our side.
Right, so, let's see, the one gentleman was concerned, he said, hey, there was no voting, I never received a petition, so, and I, and I can address that because I know I'm, Friday was the 33rd anniversary, 33rd anniversary of us, Debbie and I, buying our home. So I've lived in the neighborhood longer than probably most of the folks, and I generally have an idea of whose door I'm going to knock on and ask for a signature and who isn't, right? So you don't have to have, it isn't an affirmative thing where you must have the opportunity to vote. So if we're holding a presidential election, we all have the right to vote. This isn't truly an election. This is merely a process whereby if someone is circulating petition, and they get a majority of people to sign the petition, they may never go to a home. We do go through a public process where we notify everybody that we're going to have that initial meeting, and we go through this public process where we, you know, meet as a board. But as someone who might want to, as someone on my street, there's a handful of folks I know that have had neighbors a long time, they've been pretty vocal about not wanting to do their road, there isn't much value in me going and knocking at their door when they're just going to slam it in my face anyways, so I just go to the next house, and maybe there's someone there that wants to sign that petition. So it isn't as if, in other words, we don't control that process. We put out petitions, people can go to as many homes as they want and try to collect those signatures.
And really, the lack of a signature is a no, in essence, because we're doing the tally based on the total number of frontage in signing in favor. So the lack of a signature from anybody who felt like they maybe weren't approached is a no, in essence, because your signature is not being added towards the total. As far as whether or not there was a majority, there was, and we, we, we confirm the signatures in the clerk's office, we go through and make sure that everyone matches. I know oftentimes we maybe have a deceased spouse, we'll have to check and make sure that it actually is deceased because their name's still on the title, we go through all that process. Then we send that calculation over to our township engineer, who reviews our math and confirms that there is over 50% of the front footage represented signing in favor of it, and it's only at that point at which we move forward.
And then, so the last one was the question, does a majority want to move forward if there is no grant? So we generally see that when people come forward, we say, grant or not, we want to move forward with the project. But this is a multi-step process. So step one for us is collecting the signatures. So for example, in, in my neighborhood right now, what I found was that when I and several other neighbors went door-to-door, and we talked to residents, we saw a strong, we only want to do it if we get the grant. So step one in the process is collecting the signatures and getting one to the 51%. Step two in my neighborhood is applying for that grant in the hopes we get it. If we don't get the grant, we're not going to do this step, which is step three. The fact that we're here now is, we're moving forward with this project. This board is moving forward in getting this project to happen, whether we get a grant or not. If there was some means of us as a. If there was some means of us, as a board of seven, to know that a majority of residents don't want something, there's no reason for me to move forward with this project. I, I don't wanna cram something down your throat, but at this point, the indication that we've had from the folks who circulated the petition has said, we wanna get our road done, we'd love to get a grant, it's gonna double the price, but the road would be better, but we're not willing to redo the drainage on our own dime. So we either wanna pave it and just have it fixed, or get a grant, double the cost, have the grant pay for half of it, and get a better project. So this action we're taking tonight is our best effort to move forward, based on the understanding that a majority of folks that indicated to us, they wanna do this with or without the drainage.
And the, the only other thing was regarding the two homes on Town Hall that's asked about the project, I heard there was some question. Those, those homes both have driveway access onto Cortez, so they utilize the road, and they might say that's not their primary driveway, but there is, one home has two driveway point accesses out onto Cortez, one has another dri, a two-car garage that accesses out on it. So when we do these, we basically say, if you have driveway access on it, you're receiving the same value as anybody else. So that's, that's our, our line that we draw.
Correct. So a, as a reference, uh, one end of my street has homes at the end, um, that front the major road, but they have a driveway. So at one end, we're treating them this way. At the other end of our road, we have two homes that have no driveways that enter the road, they're not included in the SAD. So we have consistently treat, made a driveway as a deciding factor in not just this project, but other projects, in determining who's in and who's out. So that's, in other words, this isn't a, I don't know the individuals in either of these homes, I, I know I met, uh, the one lady who was in the office last week, but this is just what, this is how we've done this in the past. You have a driveway, we include it, you don't have a driveway, uh, you're not, you're not considered to have access to that road. So, and it, it, I, I don't like to be in a position to decide you pay and you don't, but you've gotta decide, you gotta have some standard, some mechanism to decide who participates and who doesn't, and that's historically what, what we've, uh, done, and it's been successful in past years. So, uh, we opened and closed the public hearing, so that's item D one on the agenda, so it would seem that at this point, uh, we'll move on to item D two.
Yes, sir. Um, the next item we have here is the consideration for the adoption of resolution number three, um, for the Cortez, Carno, and Santos Special Assessment District. Uh, special assess, uh, resolution number three directs myself, uh, to prepare the role for the project, um, or simply a list of who will pay and how much they will pay. Ultimately, uh, as the supervisor discussed earlier, final assessed cost is based on actual construction and related costs, but currently the estimated total project cost is 397,165 dollars, or a cost per lot of 9,687 dollars. So again, attaches resolution number three, which directs my office to have that assessment prepared and available for review.
All right. Uh, board members, is there a discussion, or is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. So we've got a motion to adopt resolution number three for Cortez, Santo, and Carno Streets, SAD Road Improvements by Mr. Badkins. Is there support?
I'll support the motion.
All right. Got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Olgiati. Uh, the resolution is in the board packet. Um, so any discussion on the motion, board? Hearing none, uh, I don't see anyone on deck, but is there anyone who wishes to offer a public comment to, uh, our motion to adopt resolution number three? Seeing nor hearing no public comment, Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mr. Badkins?
Yes.
Mr. Olgiati?
Yes.
Mr. Brado?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Tominalo is excused. Mr. Witt, yes. Mr. Verkast?
Yes. All right, and then next on the agenda is item D three. Uh, Mr. Witt?
Yes, the next item is resolution number four for this special assessment district. Uh, resolution number four will set the second public hearing date for October 23rd and directs my office to prepare the required notice. Again, this is something that, um, that will set that public, second public hearing, the second public hearing purpose is to speak to the assessment role as it's prepared. There are times where there could be an error in the role, so it's for an opportunity to speak to say, oh, actually, that property got combined with this one, you missed it, or if we're doing by footage, you're looking at footage to make sure that accurately represents. It's a little simpler when you're doing a per lot basis, but again, this just directs my office to set that date, uh, as well as road notices in the paper and send out those letters that we spoke to for this public hearing.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion, uh, board? Is there, uh, is there a motion? I'm sorry, discussion on the re, the resolution, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Is there support?
Support.
All right. Um, we got a motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Brado to adopt resolution number four for Cortez, Santos, and Carno Streets, um, and that sets the next public hearing. Uh, discussion on the motion?
Just a question for you, just from my, my own good, um, on these resolutions, being that they're driven by the residents in regards to the majority, but as a board, are we able, if we, if we don't adopt this resolution, where do we stand with that? I mean, that's just a question we've done three or four times over the last couple of years of different projects, and I just, you know, wanted a little clarification on that.
Sure. I think the, the simplest way to, to explain it is, special assessments are ultimately a decision of this board. So we can go out and say, hey, we are forcing you to do this project, and here's, here's what we're doing. We'll send everyone a notice, and under the law, if people get 20% of the signatures of the property facing it, then it puts a stop to the-
20% in opposition.
20% in opposition. It puts a stop to the project. And until we get 50%, over 50% of that front footage, we cannot move forward with it. So as a township, our policy is we skip that entire step and we say, we want that 50% first, to make sure that there is general support. Ultimately, it's a decision of this board, but as elected representatives, we serve, we're serving the majority that have asked for it at that point, um, similar to how, you know, we make decisions at every level here, so it's ultimately this board acting on behalf of that neighborhood group, the majority representing.
But a, but a point of clarification, I believe even if we have 51%,
Yeah.
we still are not bound to move forward.
Correct.
Right? So it is still a decision. Um, and, and the example I might give is, I think in, in the case of Bay Haven, um, we did have some side lots, and so we had homes who's, who faced, who had frontage, you know, maybe they had a 70-foot by 120-foot lot, but then we had a couple lots that were 70-foot-
They called a sack.
Yeah, eh, but they had a large side yard, and they decided they wanted to do it by linear foot, but a number of the residents came to one of these meetings and said, we, we think it's kind of unfair that this guy has a side yard and he's paying more than all of us who have a primary driveway. So we do have some freedom, some, uh, um, you know, uh, options regarding that. A, a, and again, as I said, uh, in, in the case of my own street, I, I said to the board members, or to, to my neighbors, I'm sorry, even if I, we have, you know, a majority, if we don't get the grant, I'm not gonna ask to introduce it because the petition circulators all said that was what they heard from a majority of residents. So the signatures don't bind us.
Um, all right, so we have a motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Brado. Any other discussion? No? Any public comment on the motion? No public comment, hearing none or seeing none. Uh, Mr. Witt, will you please take the roll call?
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Brado?
Yes.
Mr. Badkins?
Yes.
Mr. Olgiati?
Yes.
Mr. Tominalo is excused. Mr. Witt, yes. Mr. Verkast?
Yes. All right, thank you. Thank you all for coming and attending. I know some of you might be here for something else, but for those that spoke, we appreciate your participation. Uh, next on the agenda is item E one. Is that, uh, yours?
Yeah, I guess. Uh, so, um, the township utilizes BSNA software in almost all departments in the township to help manage our operations. Uh, the finance director and the deputy treasurer have been working to, uh, get a quote for providing some updated training, uh, for the township's, uh, BSNA in an effort to increase efficiencies and productivity. Um, we have the attached quote, uh, in the agenda item, it says five days, it really, it's a, it, right now, we're, uh, looking at six days, there was a change. Um, we realized that they didn't include any time for our building department to be able to have training, so we updated the quote right prior to the packet going out, but the cost, uh, information there is correct. Um, so we're looking for board approval to authorize a total cost of 8,615, uh, for BSNA onsite training. That's presented.
Hey, guys, if you could, it's, we're, we're still having our meeting.
Um, so ultimately, though, uh, we're only charged for days we use. If we're able to move through departments quicker, we only are paid, we only are charged what we actually incur. Um, this is one of the things we haven't done in a little while, um, we wanted to do it sooner, but with COVID and stuff and trying to line up with around audits and that kind of stuff, it just got delayed. Um, BSNA is something we've been using for almost 20 years now, and again, even if we were trained the best you could possibly be trained on the, on it when we got it, things change, features get added, so we wanna make sure we're taking advantage of the software we're paying for, and, uh, this is a good way to get training onsite for everyone, uh, because it's difficult for us to maybe go to Meridian to do the training there.
Yeah, and, and what happens, what we find also is that the, the, you know, this is kind of one of those things like, uh, we've probably all used Excel for many years, or Word for many years, but you don't necessarily know when the software has additional features. So there's a new function, but until you have a chance to have some, uh, training, you don't necessarily know how to use that function. So this is kind of something, we're, kind of an ongoing need, and it's been several years since we've done this.
Yep.
So, all right, uh, any discussion, or is there a motion?
I have a question. Uh, approximately how many employees are gonna be, be taking part in this training over the six days?
Gosh, uh, 25-ish. Uh, I mean, it's the majority of our, I mean, my department is probably the, well, mine and the supervisor's office are the two that probably use, um, BSNA the least, um, but we still have some exposure to it, um, so it's the vast majority of our office staff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say, uh, might, it might be hot, 25 might be high, but yeah, a majority of the users will, will, uh, participate. Um, all right, any other discussion, questions, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the quote, estimate for the BSNA for the onsite training as presented.
All right, is there support?
Support.
All right. Got a motion by Mr. Badkins with support by Mr. Brado. Uh, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, I don't mind addressing this agenda item if it's okay. Um, at our August 14th, uh, board meeting earlier this year, the board approved the process to post advertise an interview for the maintenance worker position for the water and sewer department. Uh, initially, this was the result of a promotion from, uh, one of our water and sewer employees to go from the, um, AFSMI group of approximately eight workers up to the management level. Uh, so due to that recent promotion, as well as, uh, one of our recent hires, it was not successful in completing probation, we actually have, uh, two positions. So we've been historically staffed at eight, uh, and we're currently at six. Supervisor, clerk, treasurer, the public services director, the water and sewer superintendent, uh, we did, uh, did schedule and interview several candidates for the position. The interviews were not completed by the time of this agenda item, uh, however, since then, uh, we did, uh, complete them, and the unanimous, um, decision on the part of the interview team was to hire, uh, two individuals. Uh, the starting salary is 46,969 dollars and 91 cents, or 22 dollars and 58 cents per hour, plus benefits, which is defined in the collective bargaining agreement. The hires are subject to a physical, a drug test, and a 90-working day probationary period, which is, works out to be about five months. So, uh, the, the most important, and we've talked about this before, but the most important thing in here is that 90-day probationary period. It's really when we see whether folks, you know, so if folks can say, hey, they interview really well, and, uh, but you know, you've gotta, uh, perform, and actually, in our case, if we're in the, almost, we're almost to the 10th month of the year, uh, and usually this takes a couple weeks for people to go, you know, maybe give notice at their prior employer or current employer. Um, this is gonna push us right through the water main break season, so these winter months are where you get that call, you know, as these jobs go, this is when you get, you know, a 1:00 AM call, and you gotta answer the phone and show up, and, you know, you get, you work through some of the tougher times of the year. So this, we feel confident that this is a good time to bring people on and see if they really, uh, can pass that probation. So we interviewed, uh, several individuals. Uh, one gentleman, Victor Curtis, is currently employed with another, um, municipality, so he's coming, uh, with experience. Uh, so the, the, the committee, uh, agreed that they would make a good hire, and then another gentleman by the name of Justin Faletti, uh, interviewed well, a little bit younger, um, some might use the term green, but, uh, you know, you kinda wanna balance of, you know, uh, some experience and some young guys, so that you kinda have a, a good mix. Uh, it is a manual, uh, labor kind of a job, so our recommendation is to hire Victor Curtis and Justin Faletti to the positions of water maintenance, of maintenance worker in the water and sewer department, subject to a physical drug test and 90-day probationary period, as recommended by the interview committee, with a starting salary of 46,969 dollars and 91 cents, or 22 dollars and 58 cents per hour, plus benefits. That's the proposed motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Is there support?
I'll support that motion.
All right. We got a motion by Mrs. Rose with support by Mr. Olgiati. Um, and I, I think, uh, I think we've got two good candidates, so we feel pretty strong about that. Any other discussion?
I just, we had a lot of good candidates, and I think it speaks to the, you know, we have a, you know, it's a good job market still for us to be able to hire people, and we're fortunate to be able to find people of that caliber.
They had a busy day a couple weeks ago, too.
They had a water main popping all over the township, so-
Yeah, I think they had five or six breaks on that day.
And a couple, in a couple days, or, and, you know, you never think about what this department does until you turn your faucet on, and nothing comes out of it.
Yes, right.
It worked really, really quickly.
That's right, yeah.
They, they did a good job in terms of addressing those.
Absolutely. All right. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Next on our agenda is item G one from the clerk's office.
Uh, yes, uh, as part of the constitutional amendment that created early voting in the state of Michigan, there are several steps that the clerk's office must take as we work through the implementation of the new laws. Uh, one item that requires board approval is the designation of a location that will be used as an early voting polling location. Uh, we are requesting that the board approve the designation of the early polling location at Rosso Hall, 39255 Lance Cruz. Uh, the boardroom is really the only space that the township has that is capable of hosting nine days of early voting practically and without major disruptions to any other operations in the township. Uh, we also recently had the space reviewed for accessibility by a disability advocacy group, which is one of the things that you're looking at when you're going through setting out polling locations. Um, so we're just looking for board, uh, approval, um, to designate this boardroom as our early voting location.
What kind of cost are you gonna incur to have, you have to have somebody sitting here for 12 hours?
Uh, we'll have to have somebody sitting here for, you know, it's a, it's a minimum of eight hours per day for nine days, so, I mean, the labor cost isn't expensive. Um, barring changes, we have to make some investments in equipment, um, just because you can't use the same tabulator in early voting as you can in precinct, but the state has made some grant money available, so to put a firm number on at this point, I, I wouldn't be able to say, uh, we're probably looking at like a, you know, 15-dollar hourly rate times six people times nine days, you know?
And I know this isn't really part of, you know, approving the-
Sure.
-polling location, but I'm just kinda curious from a, um, security standpoint. I mean, are there cameras in here that are videotaping what the workers are doing, or if somebody is-
Uh, no, we, we, we don't have security cameras in the voting location. You run into some issues having them inside the polling location with accidentally capturing ballot information, and then people have a constitutional right to a private ballot, um, so we really can't control that. We do have security cameras and controlled access where we would be storing all the voting equipment, as well as, uh, break-in resistant windows to make sure that if there was something, they couldn't get in. Um, so we have that area monitored where there wouldn't be somebody onsite, um, so that was part of the investment that this board approved previously to, to help us, you know, facilitate that security.
Okay, one more question.
No problem.
As a resident, so are you calculating those votes as they come in, or are they stored until the day of the election? How does that work?
So they are stored until the voters are putting them in a tabulator, but the programming will not allow, first off, the programming will not allow for those results to be printed prior to the close of polls on election day. And if you did, it is a, leave it as a felony to, you know, produce those results early. So you would be committing a crime.
So they won't be able to leak out like, oh, in this neighborhood XYZ is leading sixty percent to forty percent?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve this as a polling location.
And it is three eight two five five, just a typo there. All right, we've got a motion by Mrs. Rose. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Brado. All right, discussion board? Can you have some? Hearing no discussion and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, board. Next on our agenda is item H, which is public comment. Public comment can be about any subject that you wish. We try, ask that you try to limit those to five minutes in length.
Good evening. My name is Ramona Romero, and I live on here on Point. Mr. Verkess, my neighbor Bob came to see you some time ago to talk about the plans for having a memorial for Lieutenant Colonel Digger Odell at, at the site of our memorial garden. And when he left there, he said he talked to you for approximately an hour, and when he left there, he thought maybe this wasn't a bad idea. So when he suggested that to me, I told him this example. If I have four children and I bought four grave sites, one for each of my children if they should want that, their family would want it, and then I bought three stones for three of them, but had a monument built for one of them, thirty thousand dollars, and the other three got a three thousand dollar. So what does that tell you? That one child is more important. By you building a monument adjacent to the veterans' garden where they just have their name, not even a classification or anything, just their name, and then you're going to put up a forty thousand dollar monument for Colonel Odell that says, he's the important one. He's the one that counts here, and nobody else really matters. And that's how a lot of people feel. And most times when I talk to people, that is how they feel, too. So I hope you could possibly reconsider that. Also, Ted talked to you at the health expo that we had, and he also came across after talking to you, you can be very persuasive, that he also thought that possibly it wouldn't be bad. And I gave him the same example. How can you put one person above all the others when the others did their job just as well as he did? How can you do that? And he agreed with me. It's just, everybody believes we should honor Lieutenant Colonel Odell, but at another location. At our memorial, there is no special place for the colonels, the lieutenants, the privates. They're all one. They're all equal. And, and every name on there is honored equally. When we say, thank you for your service, we don't give them their title. It's just, thank you for your service. They served this country, and we should be respectful of that by not putting one man above any of, no matter what time they gave or what their title was. We are posting on the internet, and most of the feedback we got up until recently was very positive. Most people are very supportive of it and will even give us ideas of what to do. They told me to contact the newspapers, so we did that. And they have different ideas. One person wanted to have a, or a march on the monument, but we haven't done that. But anyway, recently, we had about four people that had negative thoughts, and I wanted to hear what they were thinking. And we did address all their issues. And at the end, knowing that we were going to be honoring one person above so many, they agreed with me that we have to honor all our veterans equally. They all did their job. The last thing, and very importantly, is that Mrs. Odell, and unfortunately, she's being hurt by this. She's very unhappy with it, and I knew this would hurt her. So before this even started, I had Ken, sorry, I had our county commissioner, Barbara Zinner, talk to her and let her know that it wasn't out of disrespect for her husband, it was only out of respect for him, that we wanted him to have something, but not there. So she has put things on Facebook, and we've addressed all of her issues, but that's the one thing that I feel bad about, that this is going to possibly hurt her and her family. That is why I would like to see this resolved as soon as, if at all possible, that we could honor him in a very nice place. Name our schools, name one of our parks. We don't want to hurt the family. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Good evening. Bernie Pavoni, originally forty-two years Harrison Township, and I had dual residence in New Baltimore for thirty-five years. So in regards to veterans, I stand with all veterans. Digger Odell, well, as he deserves, honor himself, and as well with all veterans. We all take the same oath. We take the same oath. Why? We honor our constitution. We, as veterans, active or not, we will protect our country, we'll protect our fellow men, and I honor Digger Odell. He's done what every veteran has done, serving his country, our country. And it's a blessing. It's a blessing for all of us. Hope we continue to have this kind of fellowship and honor for our military, and pray that Digger Odell will have an area forever honorable for him, other than usurping all the veterans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Gordon Drew with thirty-nine seven fifty-seven Erie Street, Harrison Township. I'm a veteran of four years in the Navy. I don't know if any of you gentlemen have been in the service, but it's kind of a brotherhood, all of us. And I think Mona said a lot, said that we're all servicemen, and we all should be honored justly and without any favor to. So I'm opposed to the statue and the plaque out in front here. What I'd like to see that have been done was, that place needs beautification. It needs dressing up. Kind of disrespectful now. There should be some nice flower pots and mums out there, all over the place for the veterans. I think the township would have that. The boardwalk has to be sprayed, and a lot of moss growing around. Things have to be painted or dressed up. I think township is kind of lacking in fact. I'm pointing the finger at anybody. These overlook things. I'm opposed to Mr. Odell, who is a recognized hero for the Air Force and for our country. Maybe place a plaque at a school or a park or something, not to show any favoritism or slight citing the veterans.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Spooner, three nine eight six nine Duluth, Harrison Township. I just became aware of this issue with my friend about last week. I've known Digger Odell. I have through acquaintances numerous times in numerous events because I'm a veteran and I'm involved in many communities throughout the state, basically starting Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter Ninety Detroit, and extending out here to one fifty-four and the rest of the state. So I've, really have a lot of a feeling for veterans. I think my group, we've saved a few lives through the years. And I respect Digger Odell, I really do, but I think this small area here is, to be truthful, kind of overcrowded. You put a statue in there, it's going to be even, even more overcrowded. All of a sudden, this is the main emphasis of what this park is. It's a veterans' park, but it's Digger Odell's park. And I look at all these other names out here, and some of these people I know, and some of these people even served with, this gentleman up here in front, we're talking, we're in the same unit in Vietnam. I don't know anybody that's been there tonight. So I just feel that, you know, I, I would like to see something done for Digger Odell. I really would. He, he did a lot of good in his life besides just being in the military. But I think this is just not the place for it. Or if it's, if you're going to do that, put something that's, that fits into the site, something that's sizable to the site. Nothing that's got a statue. That's kind of like overpowering the whole site. And that's just my opinion. So I would say that basically, if it's going to be a statue, I'm opposed to it. I'd also like to know where the funding is coming from. I mean, is the township going to fund this? Is it going to be through donations? These are some of the questions that I have, and I'm sure other people do, too. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Strenad, and the reason that I'm here is not to say that we did not have a monument. I'm more concerned about location. Years ago, when I was young and they started the Vietnam conflict, they were drafted. They didn't have a choice. They didn't have a say in what they would do and how they would do it. That was dictated to them. They didn't leave the country. They didn't back away from their call. They were there. So the whole group that went was equal standing. They didn't have a choice. So when you take and put one above all of the others, I don't know if that's really fair. I just feel so bad for the Vietnam vets. They came home, they were spit on. And how was that allowed? I don't know. I was alive then. It didn't thrill me then. So when I see something that takes away from what these young men did for all of us, I'm saddened. But I don't in any way want Digger Odell not to have a monument. It's just location, location. And if that location impacts the young men at that time that served our country, I don't know if it's worthwhile. I think it's an equal thing. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's hard to come up with the veterans and their families, I'll tell you. Adam, in regard to the voting, when citizens send in their voter, they get their, their material by the internet, and they respond with their voting material, that can, what time period can they respond back with when they want to fill out their ballot? What, what time period can that be? What do you, what is the expectation for this year or next year?
I, I'm sorry, I, I don't understand the question.
Well, with the internet now, someone can ask for their ballot by the internet, right? You can send it by internet?
Correct.
And they can send it back finished, completed, correct?
Not, not their ballot, no. Only, only military voter, military voters and overseas citizens and spouses can submit ballots electronically at this point.
Okay.
But that's, that is actually being delayed under the law right now. The legislature is looking to push that back another year.
So you can request online, but you don't, you can't vote online?
For military individuals, we can send them their ballot electronically, but at this point, we still need physical ballots returned.
Is that everywhere in the county?
That's everywhere in the state of Michigan.
Oh. Have to look into something. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See William Bardell, twenty-seven year resident, clean-cut, do-gooder boy next door, cleanup fix-up, people helping people. Just want to remind everyone, please check out Save Lake St. Clair on Facebook, stay up to date on everything that's going on. And I think I kind of agree with these people about all veterans being equal. And the more I hear it, the more it makes a lot of sense to me. And so with that being said, I wish everybody a peaceful, excellent evening, and stay safe, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dana Slodowski. I am a resident here in Harrison Township. And to be honest, I wasn't actually going to speak, but I figured, I'm here, why not? First off, thank you, veterans, for your service. I deeply, deeply appreciate all of the freedoms that I have and can only imagine what you have given in that. And the reason that I am here actually kind of piggybacks what that gentleman just said. I have, so I've been living here for almost four years now, and I, I love Lake St. Clair. I love being on the water. And I have noticed that littering is quite a problem here. I go out and pick up litter quite frequently on my own. And actually, back in June, my cleaning business partnered with a local nonprofit, and we hosted a litter cleanup along the Clinton River spillway, where in just a couple of hours, we cleaned up almost three hundred pounds of trash. And that is a regular occurrence. I have spoken with multiple people and then just from what I've seen. So what I, I'm not really sure how to go about making change, but I just want to put it out there that I would like to increase signage, anti-littering signage. I understand that there are anti-signage ordinances currently, so wondering what we could do about that. And then potentially increasing the fines and then enforcement of those fines. I know Harrison Township has a five hundred dollar littering fine. I have looked into some of, like what other states and areas are doing, and they have, and other states have increased littering fines and have seen a reduction in overall littering. So given that we are on the Great Lakes, we have a big responsibility to help keep them clean. And a lot of litter that ends up in the lakes comes from inland through rivers, like spill, or, you know, the Clinton River spillway, Clinton River, through the spillway, excuse me. So just wondering what we can do to possibly help reduce this problem and, yeah, keep it from occurring. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Ramona Romero, I just would like to address her worry about the litter. Beautification was planning on doing two lit cleanups this year, which we could do it even more than that. But I appreciate your thoughts because we do need to do something. The amount of litter we pick up is unbelievable, the days that we, the ones we used to do it just once a year. And now, if we do it twice a year. But we have to start controlling the people that are throwing it out. There are laws. We should be doing something about making sure they're covered. I mean, we have to keep the area clean. And even after we're done doing it one day, my granddaughter was doing it with me, as we walked out of the area, people had already thrown stuff out, a perfectly clean place. And most of it is long sixteen mile because they just throw it out, away to the beach, away back. But I agree, we need to do something more. And I think we have to start charging the people that are making the mess instead of just picking up.
I forgot. I got nervous. Sorry. So we're actually doing another cleanup on Sunday, October eighth, at the, we're meeting at the Senior Tucker, the senior, the Tucker Senior Center. You'll know where that's at, at ten AM in the morning, where the cleanup will be from ten to twelve. If you are able to come and volunteer and help clean up, we If you are able to come and volunteer and help clean up, we would love to have you, if you wanna just come and check it out and speak with myself, and then the founder of the nonprofit that I partnered with, she is quite more of an expert in that realm than I am, she knows quite a bit, and does cleanups quite frequently, so would love to have more support and conversation about this. I know that's where it starts, so, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other public comment, we'll close the floor for public comment. There was a question about the funding for the proposed monument, it, it would be through donations, so it is not a, a function of, of township expense. Any other board comment? Hearing none, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Badkins, support by Mr. Brado. Discussion? Hearing none and seeing no public comment, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you, board.